Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to open up the June 17th, 2013 Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, Mr. Park.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Bishop Colber, if you'll step up, please. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for this council. We ask that you bless our city, especially our leaders, because you say, "Well, there's no vision; the people perish." Give our leaders a vision for this city. We need help in this city, and we ask it all in the name of the Father, of all creation. Amen.
Amen. The United Nations of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As many of you already know, June 17th through 21st has been designated as National Small Business Week, and this year marks the 50th anniversary of this recognition. National Small Business Week celebrates the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small businesses. Statistics show that more than half the Americans either own or work for a small business, and they create about two out of three jobs every year in the United States. Since Waukegan is home to many small businesses, and understanding that they are the backbone of our local economy, we want to take advantage of this opportunity to kick off Small Business Week by recognizing one of Waukegan's small businesses that is celebrating their 30th anniversary in our community. I'd like to read this. We prepared a special treat for this business. I'd like Mark, John, and Brandon, and the other staff from People's Choice of Peaches to come up front. This says, "The City of Waukegan does hereby recognize the People's Choice Family Fund Center on their 30th anniversary of business in Waukegan, dated June 29th, 2013, presented at the City Council Meeting on June 17th, 2013." Thank you so much.
There's no click. It can't say cheese. It's like...
The next thing I'd like to announce is that CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan -- oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I know, they said keep it brief, and I'm gonna try to keep it very brief. A couple of things I want to thank everyone, but I also want to thank the City of Waukegan. I'm gonna pass just a couple of these around, just so you guys see what happened. 1983, I was still in high school when I opened up my store on Washington Street, and year after year after year, we kept on expanding, and the only reason I was able to expand was because of the city. We were the largest video store in the United States, occupying the former Jewel Building on Grand Avenue, and Larry, you remember when we decided to go into the family entertainment business after Chuck E. Cheese left?
Yes.
We took that risk, and you guys took a gamble on us, and you gave us one year to prove ourselves, and I think we did a fairly good job, because no one harassed us after that, but you guys gave us the opportunity. Larry's still one of the original Aldermen that was here, and I want to thank all of you for only --
Only.
Only, to give us that opportunity, but as I said, as a young kid, you know, being able to do that, I was able to do all that, because this city did it for me, and there's a lot of other people that the city's helped. I wish there was a way people could understand how important the city is, and we do have very great communities and a lot going on in the city. Our 30th anniversary is coming up. I'd like to invite everyone to stop by on Saturday, June 29th, from 11:00 to 4:00. We do it every year. Everything is free. We have food, pony rides, games, all kinds of stuff, magicians. We do it every year. It's for the community. We're a family entertainment center, and we cater to the families of this community. And again, we want to thank all of you for giving us the opportunity to do what we're doing right now. One other thing that I want to bring up is also that we are starting our -- something I had done a very long time ago, but it fell by the wayside. You haven't seen that yet, but I want to thank that all our police and fire, and with the police and fire, we're starting a new promotion that any of them come in, they get 10% off, do free movie rentals in our video store, and for those that have kids or want to do any party, 50% off. So we do want to appreciate our police and fire. And again, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.[362.62][362.62](APPLAUSE). The next announcement I'd like to make, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning will be having a meeting on Thursday, June 20th, at 1419 Washington Street. They want to hear your comments and any suggestions you have about their planning of that. I would also entertain a motion to move McGuire Woods up on the agenda. There's two people present, Darren Collier and Louis Moses. A motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Moizio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for the opportunity to give you guys an update on what we thought was a pretty robust session we had in Springfield. There were a lot of issues that affected the City of Waukegan that were discussed and talked about during the session. I think we want to give you guys an update and rundown, and we're here to answer any questions that you guys may have about them. So I think the first issue we start with is gaming, and Louis will be the first to give that to you.
The gaming bill this year was Senate Bill 1739 that had the most traction. It passed out the Senate, but it seemed to stall in the House. Representative Lou Lang relinquished the sponsorship of the bill due to a perceived conflict of interest. Speaker Madigan also had a conflict, so he wasn't involved. Representative Bob Rita became the sponsor about 11 days before the end of the spring session, so there was a short amount of time within which to work out some issues that they had with the bill. So there was an amendment filed, House Amendment Number Two, to Senate Bill 1739, on May 31st, the last day of session. So this amendment was filed by the sponsors, I think in previous versions of the bill. It had a casino in this region going to Waukegan, Park City, and North Chicago. This amendment that was filed on the last day of session had removed that language and said the casino would be located somewhere in Lake County. It was a very last-minute amendment. By the time it was filed and all the interested parties were reviewing it, it was announced by the sponsor who went ahead and filed it that he was not going to call it. There were lots of unanswered questions that he had with the bill. So luckily, it did not go anywhere. The sponsor, Bob Rita, claimed that he's going to have hearings all over the state over the summer, and he intends on filing a new version of the gaming bill in the fall veto session. October 22nd, I think, is the first day they're back. One other issue is that prior versions of the gaming bill had revenue sharing between Waukegan, Park City, and North Chicago. This version has no such language, because it leaves the boat anywhere in Lake County. I think it's the intent of the sponsors down in Springfield to have robust revenue-sharing agreements based on whoever wins the casino in this region, but without that language in the bill, there's no guarantee that revenues will flow to any surrounding communities. So as of right now, that bill has stalled, and there's nothing on the governor's desk awaiting signature, so we're going to have discussions over the summer and hopefully have a bill in the veto session. I think that's it for the gaming portion regarding guns. House Bill 183 was sent to the governor on June 5th. He has to sign that bill by August 4th, 2013. However, the state has to adopt a concealed carry structure, because its current structure was ruled down by the courts by July 9th. What was that, July? July 9th, I believe, or 5th, 2013. So we're expecting action. It's anticipated that the governor might mandatorily veto that bill, but if that doesn't, he blows the deadline that the federal court has placed on the state to come up with concealed carry regulation, and the legislature likely won't be able to get to it till the fall veto session.
I think the Attorney General did ask for another extension today, for another 30-day extension for her review of the bill today. The Supreme Court has already said that they wouldn't allow another 30-day extension from the ones she previously asked for, so we'll see what happens on that today.
Louis, would you explain the 10-day -- once it's signed by the governor, explain the 10-day grace period for home rule communities? I think, because we have that -- when I read that letter from the governor, I immediately contacted Corporation Council, and we began that. Please explain that.
So there's a provision in the bill that says, I believe it's 10 days after the bill is signed into law. If you don't -- if a community does not have an assault weapons ban on the book, it's sort of like a grandfather clause. So if it's not on the books by that date, then you cannot implement an assault weapons ban going forward, based on this law. Obviously, you could always seek a change in the law down in Springfield to let that happen, but municipalities will not be permitted to adopt their own assault weapons bans after that date. So I know, I forget, there's several local communities. I think Evanston is one of them that's considering. I think Deerfield might be another one. Ordnance is currently in light of this statute, or in light of this bill and the governor's asking.
Thank you.
Medical marijuana is also another big issue. House Bill 1 was sent to the governor on June 5th. He has till August 4th, 2013, to take action on that bill. That bill authorizes 21 dispensaries, 21 growers' licenses across the state, one per Illinois State Police District, and it also authorizes 60 dispensary licensees. So the date to sign that, or veto it, or take action is August 4th, 2013. Another issue that affects this region involves WMS. Do you want to take that shot? WMS was recently bought out by Scientific Games. The deal is still...
It's in the process of -- the merger hasn't been approved by the shareholders. It's been tacitly approved by the Department of Justice right now for the potential merger of Scientific Games and WMS.
So after that merger goes through, WMS will be prohibited from selling its products, the video poker machines in the Illinois market, which is really the only growth market in Illinois, because the two gaming licenses conflict each other under state law, and one entity can't hold both of those. So in the spirit of full disclosure, we represent the WMS. They came to us, and we passed a bill out to legislatures on the governor's desk. He must take action by July 14th. We anticipate that he will sign it into law, and this bill will state that you are able to hold both licenses simultaneously. Every other gaming jurisdiction that has video poker machines in North America, they allow you to hold both licenses. Illinois was unique in that they did not allow it. So by getting the governor to sign this bill, we're preserving the 1,100 jobs that WMS has in the state, and they expect to grow. Scientific Games does not provide similar services, so they expect the job market to really grow in the state as video poker machines expand throughout the country.
They expect to grow and expect to add new jobs once the merger is complete. The merger, I think the shareholders vote in October, November, on whether or not they will complete the merger, but this bill was a large step in them moving forward with the merger talks. There are also a few -- there was a reauthorization of the 2009 capital bill, which Waukegan had some earmarks that had been reauthorized. I won't go through those. I think we sent most of those to most of the -- most members of the city council, but we're in the process of attempting to see if we can get some of those monies released. Just to give you guys just a quick lesson on how this happens, for capital to be released and authorized, a bond deal has to take place, and the bonds that are sold have to be designated for a potential area, or for a specific area. And for the items that Waukegan has in place, we're not quite sure when that bond deal is going to happen, but we're monitoring that to make sure that when it does, that we can capture some of these funds, try to capture some of those funds. Again, I won't go through all of them. It's about seven of them, some dealing with the Kylie Developmental Center, some dealing with the Boys and Girls Club expansion.
Regarding pension reforms, also something that affects municipalities across the state, as everyone I'm sure knows by now, we're at an impasse. The governor has called a special session. We'll be back in Springfield on Wednesday. There's two conflicting plans, one belonging to the Speaker, one belonging to the Senate President. There's concerns regarding the constitutionality of each plan, and one might save more money than the other. As of right now, it doesn't really seem like there'll be much agreement by this Wednesday, but we'll be monitoring this down in Springfield.
And Brad, I think we'll open up for questions, if there are any of the council of us.
Alderman Rivera.
The College of Lake County, Lakeshore Campus, an old, you know, project that they have going on. The state's been holding back. When is that money going to be released? That's a huge project that could really affect, you know, the downtown area, so where are we at with that?
We're not quite sure. I think that's an issue for not only the Bureau of Budget, but also the Department of Higher Ed, and the Department of Higher Ed just nominated a new chairperson, and we'll be talking to her in the upcoming months, and she's a former colleague of ours, so we'll be talking in the upcoming months, trying to see where they are with that project.
I know it's been approved. They just...
Right, but the problem is, as he says, where the money comes from, once bond issues are done, our credit rating falling, the state has been leery about when it goes out to market, when it has to go out to market, when it can go out to market. So unfortunately, everything ties in together, so, you know, the pension debacle and bond deals, the state credit rating, it's all kind of ties it together.
Thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Louis, if you could be specific, if you know. If not, get back to us. I've heard two different versions about this bill passing, the concealed carry. Is it what you said, we have a 10-day period to get something enacted after the governor signs the bill? If we don't get anything enacted, your statement was, "It has to be on the books by that time," and I've heard before that we just start the process, we're okay. Do you know specifically what that answer is?
I don't. That calls for a legal conclusion. I might have to put my lawyers ahead.
It has to be passed. The letter I got from the governor said it has to be passed within 10 days after it's signed, otherwise it's invalid, and that's why, Bill, what happens with that tonight, the ordinance? I'm probably going to put that back in committee, but we had to have it prepared and ready, so if we do choose to go that direction, it will be in place 10 days prior to the passage of the bill. After, I'm sorry, after the passing of the bill.
That's my question. If the process, we start the process, it's okay. It doesn't have to be...
No, I think it has to be passed.
It has to be passed after...
It has to be passed.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Mr. Collier, Mr. Moses, I'd like to thank you for coming, and I have to tell you, working with you two gentlemen over the past two months has really made me understand how important lobbyists actually are, because you've done a wonderful job for this city, and I commend you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Audience time. Edward, 2118 Chestnut.
Thank you, Mayor Motley, esteemed members of the city council, Aldermen, and also ladies and gentlemen. My name is Edward Nazarian. I live on Chestnut Street. I've been a resident of Waukegan for the last 25 years. I'm a proud member of the NRA. I'm also a member of the Illinois State Rifle Association. I'm also an assault victim by a Mexican drug cartel individual that assaulted me approximately two years ago here in Waukegan. The question I have for the council is, why are we reviewing an assault ban bill at this time? Secondly, we have had a strategy session at the Illinois State Rifle Association this past week, and we have a number of talking points that talk about how we're going to react to a council passing this bill. There's a number of gentlemen here that will have impassioned views on this, and they'll follow me and my comments. What is an assault weapon? Does anybody have a clear definition of what an assault weapon is? Does anybody have a clear understanding of what a large-capacity magazine is? There have been studies that have shown that you can have a smaller magazine and reload faster than firing a larger-capacity magazine, so you need to understand, you need to have a discussion, and to have experts give you an understanding of this. This is a very slippery slope, and I don't mean to be threatening in that manner, but the Illinois State Rifle Association has prepared documents where they will file immediately, if there's any assault ban, they will file in court litigation, and they indicated they would name not only the city, but other individuals here present at this table. We believe very strongly in our Second Amendment rights. The problem I had is when Marco Arturo Vides of Mondaline assaulted me in Waukegan on Lewis Avenue by the Walgreens, the police detained him, released him, and then he assaulted me, and I was hospitalized on three different occasions with some severe injuries. I need to protect myself. I need to protect my family. I need to have whatever secure measures, either on my person or in my home. I don't need restrictions based on sport weapons, and I think you need to understand what the term assault weapon is a misstatement. As I mentioned, there'll be impassioned speeches. The gentleman who was part of the Mexican drug cartel was given a probationary sentence for two years, so he's scated. He's a felon. All he does is sell drugs and heroin, and he got away scot-free.
Edward, your three minutes are up, sir.
I need to protect myself. Thank you so much, council members and mayor.
Ray Georges, please.
My name is Ray Georges. I've lived in Waukegan for 55 years. I was a practicing dentist until five years ago, and I live at 2226 Chestnut in Waukegan. I have to back up what Ed said, and that is, there's a misunderstanding about assault weapons, and when I read this little thing, it says, "Adopt as presented in ordinance, amending the Waukegan Code of Ordinances, Chapter 15, offenses to prohibit assault weapons and large-capacity magazines within the city limits." I think these are two separate issues. Now, I'm not an expert expert, but I have handled guns for quite a while, and an assault weapon is a fully automatic weapon. It can be a rifle, it can be anything, but once you pull that trigger, it keeps firing until the magazine is empty. Now, the much-maligned M.A.R. 15, which is actually a civilian version of an M4, a military weapon, which when fully automatic is an assault weapon, is not an assault weapon. You can ask your mayor. He'll tell you, you can't spray with an AR-15. You have to pull the trigger every time you're going to shoot that gun. And the thing about the AR-15, it's listed as an assault weapon, and if you're going to pass any kind of regulations, and you pass the regulations on that weapon, you are doing an injustice to women and old people, because AR-15 is an extremely accurate weapon, and women can handle that weapon safely. It doesn't have a lot of kick, but it's extremely accurate, and you don't want somebody shooting a gun off that's inaccurate, because you can cause an awful lot of collateral damage. So please consider that when you consider what you're going to do. The other thing is the magazine issue, and this really bothers me, because magazine, let's say you're going to restrict a homeowner to five shots in a revolver, six shots in a revolver. Well, if two people break into your house, and they're coming up the stairs, and you've never shot at anybody in your life, your heart's going to be beating so hard, so fast, and if you miss, you had to be a good shot with five shots to get two perpetrators. So if a woman has an AR-15, and she's got 20 rounds in that magazine, the two perpetrators have got a problem, and if they have any brains, they turn around and run. Now, I just think that you should be very careful when you start limiting magazine size, because if you limit magazine size, the only people that are going to comply are law-abiding citizens. Criminals, hey, they're concealed carry right now. Criminals will go to jail because, for over a gun, because a gun is how they earn a living, and you're not going to take their way of making a living.
Mr. Georges, your three minutes are up, sir.
Well, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.[1541.15][1541.15](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name's Larry Whitson. I live at 2705 Greenwood in Waukegan. Born and raised here, lived here 58 years. Both my mother and father were born in Waukegan. My grandmother was born in Waukegan. My great-grandmother was born in Waukegan. Over the years, I've been active in my son's PTA, Cub Scouts, coaching baseball, golf, football, a member of the Waukegan Police Academy. Consider myself a responsible citizen. I like this town. I feel I have a responsibility to this town to help it become a better town, and I do what I can. I went online, I was looking, Googled some articles about Waukegan and some of the crime problems that we have in this town. Recent one, Robert Young, 23, convicted felon, was convicted for aggravated battery to a police officer, was charged unlawful possession of a weapon by a felon. Loaded gun found after Waukegan traffic stop. Alleged gang members arrested on gun charges. Waukegan brothers charged for gun and drug possession. Drugs, cash guns seized in Waukegan gun raid. We have the famous Nadia Palacios and her friends that we know were arrested for shooting guns down Ridgeland, come to find out that they had murdered a man and a Waukegan body shot just a few days before that happened. Reason I bring this up, I'm trying to show you there's a little bit of a contrast here between a responsible Waukegan, law-abiding gun owner, and these criminals that we have running around in our streets. And quite honestly, when I read about some comments that were made last month about responsible gun owners, the quote, "Responsible gun owners killing each other," I was a little upset. And now I come to find out, I was planning on coming here to address that, and now I find out that you're talking about assault weapon and large-capacity magazines. And I'm standing here wondering, what do you people, you don't know the difference between responsible, law-abiding citizens and the gang-bangers that we have running these streets that are preying upon us, but yet you want to limit my ability to defend myself and my family and telling me what I can use and what I can't use, when we know they're using whatever they want? 23 years old, beating up a cop. Why is he out on jail? Why is he running around with a gun?
Larry, I'm sorry, your time is up, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.[1746.82][1746.82](APPLAUSE). Mark Pleasant.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Pleasant. I live at 1047 Glenwood Avenue in Waukegan. I come from a military family, and I'm a retired member of the Lake County law enforcement community. Tonight, I'm not talking for or on behalf of any board or any other organization that I may be a member of. The Chicago Tribune recently reported that Waukegan Police Chief Kerkorian claimed on his 1987 employment application that he had been a Navy SEAL trainee. They reported that that was inconsistent with records that they had obtained from the military. Tribune also reported that Chief Kerkorian had... Tribune also reported that Chief Kerkorian had reportedly told former officers about that Navy SEAL training. When he was contacted, Chief Kerkorian refused to comment on that issue, according to the Tribune, and Mayor Motley dismissed it as being essentially irrelevant to his qualifications to function as the chief of police in Waukegan. I respectfully disagree. Chief Kerkorian is reported by many to have been a very good police officer throughout his career, and I sincerely appreciate his service to the community. However, any claim to have trained among our nation's most elite military warriors, if it's false, is both serious and relevant. It's relevant to the matters of principle and practicality associated with the position of chief of police. Based on documents that I have obtained, I can also report that there is an inconsistency between information on Chief Kerkorian's employment application with regard to Navy SEAL training and documents provided to me by the Navy Special Warfare Command. I find that troubling. I'm calling for a thorough investigation into the facts and circumstances of this situation. I think it should be conducted independent of anyone directly or indirectly involved, because the truth of this matter should be discovered through a clear lens and not through the prism of friendship, bias, or any other dynamic that could distort the bottom line. The investigation should include the acquisition and review of all relevant documents and records, a statement from Chief Kerkorian concerning the facts of this situation, interviews of current and former Waukegan police officers with regard to statements along those lines that have been made over the years, and interviews of anyone else who may be identified or believed to be persons with information. I also believe that the investigation should be publicly reported to the extent permissible under employment law. I think that the citizens of Waukegan have a right to know what that truth is. This is a defining moment for Mayor Motley and his administration, and it's a defining moment for this city council. And I ask all of you to join together in getting to the bottom of this, and I ask all of you to join together in letting Waukegan know what the truth of the matter is, and join in acting appropriately and accordingly. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pleasant.
Thank you, Mayor Motley, City Council. My name is Keith Turner, 1320 North Jackson Street in Waukegan. Most of you know me as a community activist. What you may not know is I'm also a civil rights activist and a two-time honorably-discharged veteran of the United States Navy. The age of 20, 18, and at the age of 22, I swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, and I stand by that oath today, as I will for the remainder of my life. I'm deeply dismayed at the news that there's a proposed assault weapons and/or magazine capacity ban that's being, to be discussed. I think it's, it's just, it's beyond me that, that you would even consider such a thing. We have three police officers sitting here, Mayor, Bill, and Artist Yancy. None of you guys, when you were on duty, would have carried a weapon with three rounds or four rounds. Every police officer that I know of wants as many, as much ammunition as possible in case, just in case, they're engaged in a gun battle. So, most police officers, I think, carry weapons with 15, 17, 18 or more rounds, a minimum of two spare magazines, and quite often a backup weapon with another spare magazine. Anyway, I want to read to you some, some points that I, were provided to me, and I don't expect any answers, and I'll try to get through these relatively quickly. What kind of firearm is an assault weapon? And how does it differ from a personal defensive, defense weapon or any other firearm? How was the amount of ammunition deemed sufficient for me to have available for my self-defense, determined? And who made that determination? Why initiate a gun or magazine ban now? Is there a recent crime problem with these kinds of firearms in Waukegan? Is the city prepared to educate gun owners on the details of a gun and magazine ban? Is the city prepared to identify, arrest, prosecute citizens who cannot do, or do not comply with the gun magazine ban? If not, why not? Is the city prepared to defend a gun magazine ban, gun or magazine ban in court? How many tax dollars has Chicago and Oak Park spent in unsuccessfully defending their gun and magazine bans? Because there is no legal definition of an assault weapon, such gun mag, gun and magazine bans encompass hundreds of models of popular self-defense, hunting, and sporting firearms. Such a gun magazine bag, ban typically covers the most popular rifle on the market today, the AR-15. Literally, millions of potentially-affected firearms are in the hands of law-abiding Illinoisans and Waukegannites. How many of them are in this town? Would the ban require the surrender and registration of all affected firearms? How will you enforce a gun or magazine ban? Generally, descriptions of prohibited firearms are vague and/or incorrect. Thus, gun owners may unwittingly violate the gun or magazine ban because they don't understand its provisions. Only one of Chicago's gunshot murders last year, and over 500 murders, was committed with a rifle. Does it make sense for the city to expend scarce resources to ban and control a class of firearms?
Keith, your three minutes are up.
Two percent of the state's murders. Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I'm gonna, if you allow, I'd like to pass this out to yourself and the alderman, and if any of you have questions for me, I'm always available. You know, thank you.
Yes. Name your address, please, Scott.
Scott Chesney. I actually don't live in Waukegan. I live on Rosedale Court.
Address, give your address, Scott.
312 North Rosedale Court in Ron Lake. Sorry, I'm not much of a speaker, but to touch on some of the things, I do believe in the Constitution. All of you took an oath before, you know, when you took these positions, which I believe everybody here is an elected official, correct? I just ask that you all stand up for that oath, you know? The Second Amendment, the First Amendment, the Fourth Amendment, I believe in all of them. I am a gun owner. I like to sport shoot. So does my wife. One of the things that they were pointing on was the ability or inability for some people to handle certain firearms. My wife in particular, when she was 19, she was in a bad car accident. She has arthritis now. She can't handle a handgun very well. A shotgun would just throw her shoulder and throw her against the wall. NAR, which is not an automatic weapon, it's a standard rifle with just cosmetic features, is the best weapon for her to be able to defend ourselves at home, need, you know, if we need to. As far as what Keith was touching on before he ran out of time, according to the records for Chicago, only one person, which any, any amount of people murdered is unfortunate, it's horrible, I don't want to see anybody get hurt, but only one person in the entire city of Chicago was murdered with any and all rifles, including what they misclassify as assault rifles. As far as Chicago's litigation, they are still in litigation with regards to the ban that they put into place. It, it has gone to the higher court. I don't know all the legal terms, but the higher court sent it back down to the lower court because of some misfiling. So, they're still spending countless money. When they overturned the handgun ban in Chicago, I believe the city of Chicago had to write a check for over $2 million to cover the legal costs back to the Second Amendment Foundation. Again, it, it, you know, if, it, you guys don't have one now, I don't see any reason that you actually need one. When you look at the statistics of how many people have been murdered with rifles throughout the entire country, it is nothing compared to handguns. The big problem in all reality is gangs. It's not the guns from law-abiding citizens. Because none of my guns assault anybody. They are all for defense or sporting purposes. If you guys have never been out to the range, Harold, I'm sure, would be happy to take you guys out, introduce you more into firearms. I actually went up to McMillan this weekend and spent a day up there with my cousin. We, we had a blast. We spent about six hours out there. Sporting-wise, it's actually quite a lot of fun. For self-defense, they're very necessary. You never know who may break into your house, who may...
Scott, that's your three minutes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Brian Dion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I thank you for your time. Want to start off by saying, I'm a little taken back by the, the term "assault weapons." As Scott touched on, my, my, my guns have never assaulted anybody. I could hit somebody with a cup. Does that make it an assault cup? I mean, it's, it's a media term. It's to demonize the firearm itself. And the assault weapons ban, oftentimes that they propose, target things, cosmetic features, like, you know, a telescoping stock. Does that make it any more deadly? No. Does a pistol grip make the gun any more deadly? No. High-capacity magazines, they're standard-capacity magazines. That 30-round mag I have for my AR is a standard-capacity magazine. You may not think I need 30 rounds, but who are you to tell me how many rounds I need? And the assault weapons ban is just, it's, it's preposterous to think that you're going to limit your, your constituents' ability to defend themselves when it's, you're effectively banning, you're, well, you're effectively not banning any of the criminals' weapons. They're, they're out there, like they said, they're caring right now. They're on the streets. They're, they're robbing buildings. They're shooting people. They don't care about your assault weapons ban. Who, I mean, who are you targeting here? Who, who, who does your assault weapons ban target? It's not the criminals. I mean, I, I'd hold you to an answer on that. Who are you targeting with your assault weapons ban? I mean, that's some things for you to think about. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Ryan, could you, your address, Ryan? Name and address. I need to put that in here.
It's Ryan Dion. It's 42161 North Third Avenue in Antioch.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Douglas Winston. I reside at 2313 Marshall Parkway here in town. Our initial speaker asked, what is an assault weapon? Speaker before me mentioned a coffee cup. Well, if you'll mind, I'll demonstrate an assault weapon to you. Here, please. It's not loaded. It's okay. It's a piece of plastic. It's pistol grip, please. Like a coffee cup. What is it used for? It's a cosmetic feature, that's it. The, the entire ban on assault weapons, it's, it's a farce. The name assault weapon is a construct that's been continued by members of groups that don't want to see us have the right to keep and bear arms anymore. They use it intentionally to confuse sporting rifles with machine guns. Proponents call such bans reasonable. They impugn their opponents by using the terms "common sense," yet listen to some of their own words. Barbara Fass, the mayor of Stockton, California, said the gun bans need to go one step at a time, and the beginning of banning what she called semi-automatic, semi-assault military weapons is the first step. Joyner Sims, the deputy commissioner of the Florida State Health Department, was quoted by Chicago Tribune as saying, "The goal, the, the goal is the ultimate ban on all guns, but we also have to take a step at a time and go for limited access." Charles Krauthammer wrote in the Washington Post that passing a ban on these weapons would have no significant effect, that its only real justification is not to reduce crime, but to desensitize the public to the regulation of weapons in preparation for their ultimate confiscation. So, you'll excuse those of us you may refer to as gun fanatics if we don't trust the noble claims of safety or the children, as much as we fear that this is another example of incrementalism in the pursuit of an agenda. I'd remind, as other members have said, the Cook County ban, which the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus was so kind to provide a draft of, and with your, your city name here, it's under at least two lawsuits currently, challenging in federal court. Is the city prepared to assume the debt of additional lawyers' fees? You know, one of the other speakers mentioned the Chicago cost, about 1.3 to 1.8 million dollars. It does not count the city attorneys that were paid by the taxpayers to further restrict the taxpayers' rights themselves. In closing, you know, since South versus Maryland in 1856, the courts have held that we individuals are responsible for our own protection, not the government. There are two dozen cases that cite South versus Maryland since then. Yet, here we are. Why are you accepting lies and half-truths from political cronies in their efforts to deny us the most basic right? No. Obligation of our own defense by whatever means we see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Thank you. James Stewart, please.
Jim Stewart, 953 Pine Street, Waukegan. Been a resident here since 03. I luckily haven't needed to use any high-capacity magazines yet in Waukegan, but who's to say how many rounds I would need? I have had threats. You were a police officer, I know, Mayor Motley, you were a police officer. You know that under a stressful situation, you're lucky if you hit 20%. The adrenaline hits, you're shaking. Well, you know, don't, don't limit my rounds. I've trained with a lot of good trainers, and I can hit majority of them. Probably trained more than most police officers. It's a lot of fun, quite honestly. But, takes time and money with that, too. It's expensive enough. But I took an oath to defend the Constitution, just like you have. Luckily, I've taken it five times. I'm a veteran. I work for the government now. I worked for the government once before, too. Legion member, VFW member. I take that Constitution rather seriously. We want to protect all of those constitutional rights. And you know, I hate to say it, but even the 16th, you know, I, I want you to keep it small, but even the 16th. So, I just want you to defend the Constitution. Remember your oath. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ron. Name and address, please.
Ron Osterlein, 674 Maumon in Lake Bluff. I was a resident of Waukegan many years ago, but now I'm the executive director for the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce, and I'm just letting you know about a couple events that we have coming up. Our golf outing this Friday is the 7th Annual Golf Outing. It's our big fundraiser for the chamber, and we're still looking for a few players to round out our 72 players. It's the ideal amount for an outing, and so if anyone's interested in that, please let me know. July 11th, we'll be having our business after-hours networking meeting at Larson Marine. It's the second Thursday of every month, and this one, like I said, will be at Larson Marine. We just had a great one last week at the Dandelion Gallery, and we did that together with Main Street, and we had a lot of fun there. Yeah, and that's, that's, those are our two, oh, and then the third event is our multi-chamber event on July 25th, and that's a, that's a big event. There's usually about 200 people or more from all, not just Waukegan, but many other areas surrounding Waukegan, and that's going to be at the Yacht Club on July 25th. And then finally, I wanted to thank, on the beh, behalf of the board, we want to thank Mayor Motley for coming to our recent board meeting and opening the door to some renewed collaboration that the city needs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Julian Muscat. Muscat, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I want to tell you a little story. Last night, I was listening to ABC News, and they told everybody that in the state of Connecticut, because of the new rules, the, I call them gun-grabber rules, that have been passed by the legislature in the state of Connecticut, two famous gun manufacturers, Mossberg and Colt, are now thinking of leaving the state of Connecticut. I'm also hearing that in the state of Colorado, there are numerous companies that make guns, gun accessories, and thereto, they've had all of these gun-grabber rules adopted, and they're thinking of leaving the state of Colorado. So, along comes the governor of Texas, Rick Perry, and he's courting these companies to bring them into the state of Texas. What should be happening here is, we in Waukegan... What should be happening here is, we in Waukegan should be courting these companies to bring them into the city of Waukegan so that they can provide jobs for the people in Waukegan who don't have jobs. We need to have a gun-friendly image so that we can recruit companies to come into Waukegan to manufacture the very items that this proposal seeks to ban. I want these items made in Waukegan by Waukegan people. That's what I want. This, on the other hand, if we were to pass an anti-gambling ordinance, how could we expect a company in the casino industry to want to come to Waukegan? That's a non-starter. But we need the jobs here, and this presents an opportunity for us to bring gun manufacturers into this town where they can employ people who live in Waukegan and other parts of the county, and then we'll have paychecks, which we've lost since July of 1981. This is what we need, but I want these things that these ordinances would ban, I want them made in Waukegan by Waukegan people for the use by Waukegan people. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. James Peters. No? Joan Schrank.
Hi, my name is Joan Schrank, and as everybody there knows who I am, but I am the owner of Schrank's Smoke and Gun, a small business which has been here in the city of Waukegan for 49 years. Today, we received calls from customers who heard about the proposed ordinance to prohibit assault weapons and large-capacity magazines within the city limits. These citizens of Waukegan are very concerned that this ordinance would adversely affect their safety and rights. You might say that, yeah, Joan's concerned with her livelihood. I am that, but I am also concerned about the slippery slope that Ed mentioned. That wasn't in my little speech here, but I think there have been some valid concerns mentioned tonight, and I would just request that the ordinance not be adopted until there's further study and more information presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Jamie Omara.
And now for something completely different. Jamie Omara, 1318 Chestnut Street. I'm here representing Waukegan Main Street. I'd first like to report that our art walk last Saturday was a huge success. We're seeing more and more of our artists actually selling their work, and that's what this is all about, economic development. We had another ribbon cutting on Saturday, a chocolate shop, and if you're anything like me, I can show you exactly where it is. I've bought some chocolate there a couple times already, called Sweet Things. It's at 108 South Genesee. This coming Saturday, the 22nd, the annual Chicago to Waukegan Sale Race is happening. This is a public event at the Yacht Club. You're all welcome. It starts at noon and goes well into the evening. And on June 29th, a long-awaited event for all of us, the grand opening of the Cartier Art Space Lofts. It starts at 11:00 a.m. This is a huge celebration for a phenomenal project that represents the collaborative nature of what we can do here in the city when we put our heads together and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of the June 3, 2013 regular meeting and the executive session minutes. Motion by Alderman Falco, second by Alderman Rivera. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next motion is to appoint Bill Anderson to the Waukegan Library Board. Mr. Anderson, are you here? Would you like to come up and make, say a couple of words, please?
Oh, that's all right. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion by Alderman, a motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alman Moiseo, for the appointment of Mr. Anderson to the Library Board. All's in favor?
Aye.
Relay for Life proclamation, Mr. Clerk?
Proclamation, Relay for Life, Greater Waukegan, Far North Shore. Whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life began in Tacoma, Washington in the mid-1980s and was founded by Dr. Gordy Klatt, who wanted to enhance the income of his local American Cancer Society office and show support for all of his patients who had battled cancer. And whereas the Relay for Life is a signature activity of the American Cancer Society and celebrates cancer survivors, caregivers, and remembers those who lost to the disease and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas this 12-hour walk exemplifies the motivation that one person can make, that one person can make a difference, and key moments of the event include Survivor's Lapse, Luminary Ceremony, and the Fight Back Ceremony. Whereas the Greater Waukegan Relay is one of 5,200 relay events held annually across the United States. And whereas proceeds from the event make possible programs such as free wigs and headwear from the Wig Bank, rides to and from treatment, look-good-and-feel-better sessions for women undergoing treatment, support networks, cancer care specialists, and funds more than $100 million in cancer research each year. Whereas the annual Relay for Life of Greater Waukegan, Far North Shore, will take place this weekend at Beavir Park. And whereas the city of Waukegan and our partners encourage all to participate by walking or by providing sponsorships for a team or an individual walker. And whereas, now therefore, it be resolved that Mayor Motley and the members of the Waukegan City Council do hereby proclaim June 22nd and June 23rd, 2013, as Relay for Life Weekend in the city of Waukegan. Be it further resolved that an envious copy of this proclamation, signed by Mayor Motley and the city clerk, be presented to the organizers of the Relay for Life, the Greater Waukegan, and Far North Shore dated this 17th day of June 2013. Signed, Mayor Motley, hardest agency clerk.
Is there someone from the Relay for Life here?
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Jamie McCaffrey, and on behalf of Michelle Vasquez, my 2013 co-chair, our amazingly dedicated committee, and all of our relayers in our area, we would like to extend a huge heartfelt thank you to the city for their continued support for the last 14 years. Last month, American Cancer Society celebrated its 100th anniversary, and by partnering with us and allowing this event to take place, you are all instrumental in making changes that have happened in the last 100 years. Now we can safely and excitedly say, two out of every three that are diagnosed are now surviving cancer, and we are not done in this war. Until the day that we can find those cures and three out of three are surviving, we fight hard every day. And so your continued support helps to make this possible. For those of us that do this every year and walk those 12 hours, and some of us are up for 36 hours, it's one of the most life-changing experiences that we've ever had. So I encourage all of you to come out. Our opening ceremonies does kick off at 6:00 p.m. at Beavir. Mayor Motley will be there as well, and you're all invited. It's amazing festivities throughout the evening. We have a phenomenal luminary ceremony at 10:00 o'clock at night, which really embodies what we fight for. So thank you all again so much for all of your support in this fight.
Thank you, ladies. Committee reports. Insurance Committee, Alderman Cunningham.
Thank you, Your Honor. The insurance committee met, and unfortunately, I was not there, but I was briefed by Tina, I'm sorry, our finance director. Item A, motion to authorize the proper city official to settle claim WC 2011841434 for the amount not to exceed $20,257.19. I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B, motion to authorize the proper city official to settle claim number WC 20118027 for Q as in Queen and, I'm sorry, correction, zero, and claim number WC 2012857080 for combined amount not to exceed $48,055.62. I so move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Let's hit, Your Honor.
Next is the Finance Committee. Alderman Falco.
Thank you, Mayor. We had, the Finance Committee met this evening at 6:15 p.m. We only had one item on the agenda. It was to enact an ordinance authorizing the issuance of parking fees and sales tax revenue refunding bonds. And Mayor, as you know, for the rest of the council also, excuse me, in 2004, the city issued its parking fees and sales tax revenue bond series 2004A in the original principal of, excuse me, the original principal amount of $8,245,000. As of May 1st, there is still an outstanding principal of $5,650,000 on the bonds. And the current interest rate market is such that we may reduce the annual principal and interest payments by refinancing the bonds. Unfortunately, the interest rates have gone up, and it's not conducive at the present time to refinance, so the ordinance tonight would give the finance director the authority to refinance. And Barry, excuse me, there's a couple other ordinances in there that dovetail on this. What is that? I'm sorry, come on.
Brian.
Brian.
Brian, I'm sorry. Come on up here.
There's one ordinance, as the Alderman said, that allows for the financing and delegates to the finance director the right and authorization to have the bonds issued if the savings reaches 3% of the outstanding principal. And this is referred to as a parameter ordinance that this type of market, which jumps every day, jumps up, down, sideways, you have to move quickly. So this, if it's adopted tonight, it would put in a position for the city to have these bonds sold, as long as there's a 3% savings. This ordinance, if it is approved, authorizes obviously the ordinance, but also approves the bond purchase agreement, the escrow agreement, the official statement. It's all within the one ordinance. Again, this is a revenue bond. It's not a general obligation of the city, meaning that it's not a debt that the taxpayers of the city would have to be responsible for, would not be on the tax levy. It's payable out of the parking fees and possibly run short some sales tax revenue. The Alderman have been provided copies of all the ordinance and the attachments, which I just referred to, and that's the situation, the, so what would be in order would be the motion, the, to adopt the ordinance as presented, issuing these bonds. If there's anything else I'd like to say, but that's, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer the questions. So what should be in order to adopt the ordinance?
Yes.
As presented. Is there, I've lost track. Is there a motion in a second already?
No, motion by Alderman, motion, any questions on this?
I guess I would have one, seeing that those are potential savings, where we're going to, and this might be a question directed to Tina or yourself, Your Honor, will be using those savings to expedite the reduction of the bond or just utilize the savings for other things? Tina?
Got it tonight?
No. This will lower the annual debt service. The bonds will still go until December 2024, so we wouldn't be calling them in any sooner, and this is within the parking enterprise. So if we lower the debt service in the parking enterprise, then it should hopefully lower our dependence on sales tax to help make up the difference to pay for these bonds. Since 2004, we've been transferring sales tax into the parking fund in order to pay for the debt service and the other operations. So our hope would be anywhere between $6,000 to $10,000 annually less in debt service through 2024, and that would be that much less in sales tax we'd have to take out of the general fund.
So, okay, just so, from my own, we're not going to use sales tax to help out that deal?
That would be the goal, yes.
All right, so that's even better. Thank you, Tina.
Motion by Alderman Falco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call.
I have a question I'd like to ask Tina. What assurance do we have that we're going to be actually money ahead if we go through these expenses for the bond council and everything to redo these bonds?
The ordinance is drafted.
You said, I heard 10, I heard 10,000 at one time a year, and now I just thought I heard you say six maybe.
Well, between, depending on the serials of the bonds. Because it's the interest. So the, in the ordinance, we would have to realize a 3% net present value savings after cost of issuance.
To make it worthwhile.
Yes, absolutely. So after the cost of issuance, the attorney's fees, the underwriters' fees, it would be 3% net present value after that.
So it's possible we're not going to go ahead with it if things don't work out right?
It is possible.
And then what happens to these cost factors that I?
They're not incurred.
They're not incurred if it doesn't go through?
Correct. On bond issues, you only pay the vendors if the transaction takes place.
Thank you. Did we negotiate some of these vendors' fees?
The financial advisor fees, we've gone through requests for proposals on those every few years. They get paid a percentage of the par value. The attorney fees, I believe Corporation Counsel Martin discussed with the attorneys what their fees were. The rating agencies have a set fee. They charge what they charge because they can. And I'm not sure what other fees, maybe the bank fees you're looking at there, and the bank fees, we negotiate those. Amalgamated bank is the trustee we use on several of our bond issues, so we always quote their price out before we agree to anything.
It's kind of difficult for me to read all of these people with their hands out, why we need all, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 8 people with their hands out getting part of the action. Why do we need so many?
It's a complicated process when you enter into debt. So there's bond counsel that issues an opinion, and Mr. Gray can probably speak to this, too, but bond counsel issues an opinion that the city is in compliance with IRS regulations regarding the tax implications of that. Issuer's counsel works for the city to make sure that our ordinances are in order and that we're being protected. The rating agency gives you a rating on the bonds, or else you can't sell them. The trustee is the one that pays the bondholders, so that's why they're in there.
Now, why couldn't, we have a corporation counsel now, do we not, with a desk here and everything? Why couldn't he do that, the issues, the counselor? Why couldn't he do that job? Why am I paying somebody else?
I'll let Mr. Gray speak to that, but issuer's counsel has a very specific role for bond issues.
That's right. The bond council does not represent the city. He represents the bond buyers. Issuer council represents the city's interests. So my role in this is to review the documents and be satisfied that the city's interests are protected and that the city's not making promises it don't want to make. We have to issue an opinion to bond council that we've done everything right here. So, and as the Finance Director has stated, there's a lot of parties involved, but these are not simple transactions, and there's millions of dollars involved.
So, so as my understanding, Tina, we're going to save between $6,000 and $10,000 a month to the year 2024, am I correct?
Six to 10,000 per year.
Through?
Through December 1st, 2024.
2024.
If we hit our 3% net present value target after cost of issuance.
If we don't, we're not going to go through.
If we don't, we're not going to go through the transaction. None of the costs of issuance would be incurred.
One other question, I know I'm a pain, but that's me, comes to money. Is any way we can use that saving to get out of debt? You know, every year.
If it's way higher than 3%, sure.
Well, I know that, but if we can squeeze here and here, eventually, my goal many years ago was to get out of debt. Oops, and it's time to be quiet, Larry. I just, but you just see it as keeping the tax rate down, is it?
Well, these don't impact the tax rate. These are revenue bonds, so it's paid for by the parking enterprise and then sales tax. We did look at trying to restructure them to pay the bonds off sooner, but the market just wouldn't bear that out with any savings.
Okay.
So, yes, it would be, these don't really have an impact on our general obligation debt, but we have refinanced or restructured all of the outstanding debt that was in the market to do so with the general obligation over the last couple of years.
I just gave you an A+.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add one more thing. The 3% figure, and again, it's not my area, it's in Tina's area, is actually a conservative figure. There could be other municipalities that if it was 2% even right now, or 2.5%, would still be doing the financing, because as the Finance Director has stated, that the savings here is net of all of these expenses that have been discussed.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee recommends that the City Council adopts a supplemental ordinance authorizing the issuance of parking fees and sales tax revenue refunding bonds series 2013A of the City of Waukegan, Illinois, and I so move, sir.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B, approval of payroll dated June 13, 2013, in the amount of $1,339, $339,771.16 and $44,865.16. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Item B, approval of bills dated June 17, 2013, in the amount of $894,426.83. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item number C, approval of block parties. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Conkin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, adopters presented an ordinance amending the Waukegan Code of Ordinance, Chapter 15, offenses to prohibit assault weapons and large capacity magazines within the state limits. Gentlemen, I've heard your, I've heard your words tonight. I affirm belief in the Second Amendment of the Constitution. It would have been irresponsible of me, as mayor of this committee, not to bring this to council, to let them address this issue. When I was notified to Governor's Office that this was something that they suggested and recommended we do prior to this passage, I felt incumbent on doing that. I made, I had a long conversation with Corporation Council about this issue. We agreed to bring it to the attention of City Council tonight. Therefore, gentlemen, I would like to, I would like to put this back in committee and have Alderman Conkin address this in the Public Safety Committee. So at this point, it's going to committee for review.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
There are a couple of things on this. First of all, again, our esteemed legislatures, I, I think this issue obviously is a lot bigger than a municipal issue. This isn't 1820 when people riding around on horses and can't get from town to town. People are mobile, so I don't know why something like this would even come to a home rule community. It just, it just doesn't make any sense to me, whether you're pro-gun or against guns or anything like that. I just don't understand. It's not practical for this body, in my opinion. Second of all, they give, this is an issue, obviously, from all these people that have spoken, and if you go on any internet or watch any of the news, this is a contentious issue, and they say after 10 days, you got to make a decision. I mean, that's ludicrous. I'm just, I'm just venting here to, sometimes I don't know what goes on in Springfield. I just can't understand those people down there at all. 10 days after this, and this is an issue that the whole country's arguing about, and they say you got 10 days to make a decision. But in my opinion, this is an issue that is not even germane to what this, what the City Council or any local government could be. There's, I mean, we could go back and forth. If we, if we pass it as a home rule, you can't have assault weapons in North Chicago doesn't, or if we said you couldn't in another town, I mean, it, it becomes a patchwork. It's a mess. It becomes an absolute mess. So, maybe it goes back to committee, but in my opinion, I don't, I don't think it belongs here. I know you had to do it. I'm not, I mean, you had to do it, probably. You would have been derelict by not bringing it to us. You have to do it, I guess. But to me, it's just, it's just absolute silliness that it's even before us. Thank you.
Okay, that's referred to committee.
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
This ordinance bans almost every firearm that I own. I don't think we had to bring it to the council. I think it's wrong. Second Amendment is there to protect us from the tyranny of government, federal government, which is getting way too big. They dominate the local, the local, the national news. You can't turn on the TV without hearing federal government this, federal government that. And I think it's time that they get pared back, way back, and start giving our money back. We know how to spend our money best. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, Treasury report.[1097.58][1097.58][applause] Mr. Treasury Schwab.
Sir.
It's just accept the Treasury's report of the month. Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Rivera to accept the Treasury.
Aye.
opposed. Thank you. Resolutions and ordinances, these, from A to E, where we are forming three new TIF districts. What these ordinances do are prepare the TIF districts. Noel, you want to come up and give them a brief overview of this?
As you know, we engaged Cane McKenna and Associates last fall to look at establishing new TIF districts. We're looking at three new TIF districts. These ordinances specifically cover, the registry ordinance covers all three TIF districts. The other resolutions cover only the downtown and South Lakefront TIF districts because they involve housing impact studies, feasibility studies that aren't required for the North Lakefront District because of the limited housing stock within that district. So what's in front of you is an ordinance to create an interested parties registry, which is required by the state statute, where interested parties who want direct notification rather than having to watch for public notices can sign up, and they'll receive direct notification from the city about any actions related to the TIF districts. And then the resolutions are authorizing the feasibility studies to be conducted by our consultant, Cane McKenna, for the downtown TIF district, for the South Lakefront TIF district, and to establish the public meetings for those two districts, the downtown and South Lakefront districts. The downtown district meeting will be Tuesday, July 16th, at 5:30 PM in this room, and the South Lakefront meeting will be at 6:00 PM also on Tuesday, the 16th, in this room. Any questions on those?
Thank you, Noel. Thank you. Item A, ordinance, approve, approve an ordinance establishing an interested parties registry and adopting rules for such registry for redevelopment project areas within the City of Waukegan. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item number, item B, resolution adopt, a resolution authorizing the feasibility study and a housing impact study concerning the redevelopment of certain property located within proposed downtown TIF district in the City of Waukegan. Motion by Alderman Beadling, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item C, resolution, adopt a resolution authorizing a feasibility study and a housing impact study concerning the redevelopment of certain property located within the proposed South Lake TIF district in the City of Waukegan. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item D, resolution, adopt a resolution concerning a public meeting to be conducted as required by Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment, Allocate, I'm sorry, Allocation Redevelopment Act for the proposed downtown TIF district to be held on Tuesday, July 16th, 2013, at 5:30 PM at the City Council chambers. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Resolution E, item E, resolution, adopt a resolution concerning a public meeting to be conducted as required by the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act for the proposed South Lake TIF district to be held on Tuesday, July 16th, 2013, at 6:00 PM in the City of Waukegan Council chambers. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item F, resolution, resolution authorizing the sale of property by the City of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, namely 850 Adams Street, for $76,821 as presented. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item G, resolution, resolution authorizing the sale of property by the City of Waukegan pursuant to Neighborhood Stabilization Program, namely 2440 Linden, for $85,716 as presented. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, Mr. Clerk, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, Alderman's.
Sir?
Excuse me.
Izelle.
Oh, Izelle.
Item G, Your Honor, should be 2240.
2240?
Can we get that address corrected?
Okay. It'll be 2240 Linden Avenue, 2240. We'll change that. Thank you, Izelle.
Thank you, Izelle.
Mr. Clerk, audience, Alderman's time, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes. Need to speak out on the number of people that are not cutting their grass, especially the vacant homes. And it really distracts from the, from the neighborhoods to see grass over a foot and a half high. Looks, the other point I want to bring out is, I'm in the ward almost every day, and I've noticed a much better presence of squad cars in the area. They used to be in the main street, but somehow, someone's told them to get out into the neighborhoods. neighborhoods. And I really appreciate that, chief. It was from your direction because it's nice to see them in the neighborhoods. People see them. They're much more visible than staying on the main tracks. And I want to thank someone for that. The other thing, we do have a problem when we have houses that are vacant for 10 years and nothing's done. Holes in the roof, holes through the walls. We need to come up, and I think the mayor's already started on it since they brought our attention to it, to come up with a program where either knock them down or get the homeowner to auction them off and get them rehabbed, but to sit there vacant for that long a period is just not good for the city. It's a health hazard to the surrounding homes. It's a danger to the community with vacant buildings where kids can go into and, and vomit, so you don't know what's going to happen. And I think we need to take a more proactive stance in, in ending this blight because it is a blight in a sense. And we need the banks, and also I think we need to get stronger rental codes. I think we have to have a rental license now, but I think we need to make a special effort to see that those that are renting do have a rental license. I think we're missing some, and I'm going to start working in my ward to make sure we got them all registered. And those are my comments this evening. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce for coming tonight. I know I'm usually up here banging the drum for Main Street, and I still love Main Street too, but the chamber puts on a lot of great events that brings people into Waukegan businesses who may not have been there before. So I encourage everyone, especially my colleagues up here, to attend the chamber as well as the Waukegan Main Street event. I want to thank the Seventh Ward for coming out in big numbers for the ward meeting last week, and I want to thank all the city employees that assisted me with the agenda. We had a good showing from the Waukegan Police Department. We had the chief there. Chief, thanks for coming. Commander Flora, Sergeant Kelly, and Officer Laney Newman, who was a star in the Seventh Ward. Dave Marion was also there to talk to us about code issues, and I got to tell you, that's the biggest phone call I'm getting right now. It has to do with long grass, unkept properties. I have to, I have to give a big, big shout out to Carmen Santiago in the Code Department. We got a lot of high grass phone calls after that ward meeting, and can I tell you, I drive around after, two days after getting the call in, and she's contacting the banks and they're getting cut. So the system does work. They just, keep in mind, they're overloaded. The figure that was given to us at the ward meeting was 3,200 vacant foreclosed properties in the city right now. That's a lot of houses. So, and I also want to thank David Motley. He gave us a great tour of the new city website. So thank you to everyone for making that a big success, and we'll do it again when school's back in session. I also want to thank Dr. Donaldo Batista, who hosted a intergovernmental meeting this past weekend where he called together elected officials from the Park District, the School Board, the city, the township. We all came together for a breakfast on a Saturday morning. No one had to be there, but the room was full with a great showing from the city and just to, to reestablish good relationships between these governmental agencies. So mayor, thank you so much for also being there. It was a great meeting, and then we're going to continue. City Waukegan will be hosting the next forum. And then my final shout out also does go to, once again, the Police Department. I was honored to be involved with the torch run this year. You may have seen in the newspaper, the different police departments across the county carry the torch from one side of the county to the other and raise money for Special Olympics. This year, we had a team of 35 people carry the torch from Beach Park down to North Chicago. As everyone knows, I'm a runner. I run around the ward, so this is a great opportunity to get involved with some camaraderie with the Police Department. So just wanted to give a shout out for that cause. Thank you, and that's it.
Alderman Valco.
Take a pass tonight, sir.
Alderman Rivera.
I'll take a pass.
Alderman Cunningham.
Two things. One, I'd like to, to congratulate city clerk Gancy and Mr. Mark Jones during the Juneteenth celebration hosted by Greater Faith Baptist Church, put on by, by the Juneteenth Committee, nominated these two gentlemen as Father of the Year. So I want to congratulate them, and I know Mark has a young family and artist, almost an empty nester, but it was a good, a good showing there this weekend, and congratulations to those two gentlemen. Second, I want to echo Alderman Tempest. This is not a, this is not a call but a cry. This grass in our city, it's, it's just unacceptable. It's unacceptable. I know we have, we have, at this point, I don't think we can rely on the banks. The banks are going to do what they're due. It, it just comes a time when we have to do what we have to do. I see that a lot of our gun enthusiasts are here. I can tell you, those 10-year-old homes, I can give you a couple of places you can do some target practice on. I, I will not be the one to say anything. That's just me talking. You put enough holes in them, I won't say what the kind of holes they are, they'll fall down themselves. But the grass, the tall grass, citywide, it's, Dave, I know you're strapped. I understand that. But we have to do something about this. Neighbors are just blowing our phones up. They're blowing our phones up. So we, Dave Marion and his team is just, we got to give them some help. We got to give them some help. I don't know what that help is, but we have to give them some help. They cannot continue to just beat the phones with these, with these banks. They need some support, whatever that support is. And, and I truly understand that he's very frustrated. He's trying to do, and his team is trying to do what they can, but we have to give them some support. And as a former code enforcement inspector, if they don't have the support from a financial standpoint, they cannot do their jobs. It's just bottom line. So I, 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 I hear them, I, I sympathize with them, but they need help. Your honor, I, I don't know what, what we can do at this point, but they need some help. Last but not least, obviously, it's the summertime. We want to kick up this, the notion that our young men, our young ladies running the street at the 10 o'clock. I don't know what the curfew is. Chief, maybe you can give us what the curfew is, and maybe we can get that, that out to our communities. Young men and young ladies cannot be out, I think it's what, 10 o'clock or something? Whatever it is, we need to get that message out and let them know. We will, we will, if I'm not mistaken, right, chief? We will bring these young men and young ladies in, and parents come pick them up, and there is a small fee for that.
Yes, we have a three-man curfew detail from Tuesday through Saturday, from 6 till 2:00 in the morning. So once it becomes curfew at 10 p.m., we just check in with those officials who are curving for them. And I took the switch carries out of the office.
Good, good. That's great, that's great. And echo what Alderman May says about the community police officers. I don't know if that's the technical name for it, but our community police officer, he is a, also a star in, in, in my ward. I think the various officer are stars in all of our wards because they do hands-on, frontline, and they're making a great impact, and they'll tell you they're doing it with a smile, chief. So please pass that on to that team doing a great job. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a couple of comments and address most of the issues that we've heard during audience time tonight. I think what, what happened downstate when they passed this concealed carry, concealed weapons carry act, they were told that they had 180 days to do it, and that would have been June 8th. Now, in that 180 days, as Alderman Moiseau stated, our state legislature decided to keep putting it off until the last minute and gave it to the governor on Friday, two days before he was supposed to sign it, before the weekend yet. He then went and asked for a 30-day extension and got it, so now it's July 9th. And now, from what I heard, it's even been moved back farther to August 14th. It's moved back to August. I hadn't heard about that, but I heard it tonight. What I think they did was, they wanted, they would like to have passed this assault weapons ban in the state, and they probably knew they couldn't get it through. So what they're doing is they're asking the local communities to do it for them, and by doing so, like what Alderman Moiseau said, they're just creating a patchwork. You're going to have some cities pass that, some cities not, and then you and I might be traveling down the road, and if you happen to get pulled over in a city that has passed it and you didn't know about it, because they're not going to announce it to you, you're going to go to jail and door confiscate your weapons when you thought you were being legally carrying your weapon. And unfortunately, they didn't have the guts to just pass something that the whole state would live with. And I feel that by doing this, we're also setting ourselves up for lawsuits, and I think that since this ordinance is modeled on the Cook County lawsuit, or a Cook County ordinance, that they're going to ask everybody to help them defend it, and I don't think we should, and I don't think we should have to defend any ourselves. So we will, as, as the Public Safety Committee, we will look this over. We will do our jobs, and we will take the steps necessary to act correctly upon this. And that's really all I have to say about concealed weapons carry. Other, the only thing I, I do want to mention that, this was a concealed weapons carry act that they were supposed to get, it should have had nothing to do with assault weapons, in my opinion. They just added on, added something onto it that didn't belong there. The only other thing I'd like to mention is we will not meet again before the Fourth of July parade, which is Sunday, June 30th. So I want to make sure everybody remembers Fourth of July parade. I'm assuming it's the same route, mayor?
Yep.
Down Sharon Road with fireworks in the evening?
Yes.
And so please, everybody come out and enjoy both the parade and the fireworks. Thank you. Oh, excuse me. The parade is on the 30th, the fireworks are on the Fourth of July. Thank you, David.
Just two things.
Alderman Moiseau.
There's going to be a Grand Avenue market open up. On Grand Avenue where the old Grand Bowl used to be, it's just a vacant parking lot right now. Somebody came up with the idea, why don't we have a market over there? You can go on Facebook and check out the details, but I think it's a great idea of an open space that's waiting to be developed, and it's already, it's already paved and everything like that, so it's going to be an open market, like a farmer's market type of thing. So I think that's a good idea. Second thing, vacant homes. We've all touched on it. I went to Tom Hagerty, and I said, Tom, just, just curious, 3,200 vacant homes. Let's say we, you know, we decided we were going to try to cut them. But we contracted out our grass service to cut the city lots. To cut all the foreclosed homes in the city of Waukegan one time would cost us $86,000. I don't think that's feasible. We couldn't even cut it one time. And that's at a discounted rate. That's the contractor that we hired, he gave us, I mean, it's, it's really low. That's just cut in the front. You could get, it would cost you more to have the neighborhood boys do it. If we took on the responsibility of trying to do it, 86,000 one time, we'd be broke. So that's how big the problem is. Again, we have got to get our arms around this. It, it's a monetary issue, it's a responsibility issue, and again, I think we all understand, Dave's and the building, they are swamped with it, swamped. And we tell residents to call us and let us know, and we try to, it, it's, it's becoming epidemic. I don't know, I mean, we just have to just keep working with it, keep trying to get to it, keep holding people responsible for it. Some of these, again, I'm going to make it my charge to get some of these ones, like as Alderman Cunningham has said, Alderman Tempest had said, we're going to knock some of these down. We are going to get that done. I'm going to try my hardest to get that done in the next year, if not earlier. Me and Mr. Hagerty have talked about that, how to do it. We're going to, I'm going to get that done. Come hell or high water, I'm going to get some of those knocked down because some of them are just, they're just a crime waiting to happen. We have said it over and over, they're a crime waiting to happen. We've got to do something about it. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
Tall grass. There's a home on Judge Avenue at 632 specifically. I, I've called the servicer three times myself over the last month, you know, and I keep reminding him, you know, I, I called you a week ago about this. Can you give me a date when someone will come out and mow this lawn? It's 30 inches tall. I wish we could just start levying fines day after day. It's a nice, it's a small bungalow, it's a nice house. I've been inside. Why we can't just find them out of existence? The bank levy the fines, take them to court. If they don't want to pay it, can we take the house away from them and sell it ourselves? Is that possible?
We've, we've put liens on those properties. We've done, we've done that, put liens on the property. Well.
Somebody lives out in the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, then the problem is, some poor, poor person wants to buy the home. They still want to get their money out of it, but then they have to pay all the fines from the city, or do we just forgive the fines? I don't see why we can't find them and take it away from them and have somebody sell them at cost, whatever we have into it. What would be wrong with that in an auction where it's fair for everyone? Because these banks, they just, they don't want to take care of their obligations. They all had a good time when they were churning those fees in the early hot years, no money down, low-interest mortgages. You don't even have to qualify at the income level. And now the market's broken. Can we look into that, perhaps?
Yes, I will look into that thing. I will.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn by.
Alderman Newsome.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Newsome.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm last.
I'm so sorry.
Usually I pass. We're talking about all the tall grass, and I have several properties in my ward, but on another note, I'd like to thank some of the people in my ward, the residents that have come together and paid local people in the area to cut vacant lots and so forth. So to them, I want to say thank you for helping the city out and coming together and trying to help the city maintain some of those vacant lots. And I hope that we'll be able to work on something soon to get several more cut because I have one in particular I'm working on, and I think that grass is almost tall as me. It's about four, four feet, something. But anyway, on another note, I will be hosting my next ward meeting, and it will be June 27th, Thursday evening, at 5:30 PM at the Community Action Partnership Building, and that's just next door to Larson's Florist. Fifth Ward residents come out, wealth of information for you, along with some food. So thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Beedling. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you for, thank you, everyone.